We'll start by opening the special meeting of the Lancaster Select Board. There you go. All that was a prelude to opening of the meeting and reminding folks that we are being broadcast on Sterling Lancaster Television. It is, as a result, being recorded, and I will do a roll call of the Select Board. Mr. Allison?
Here.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
And Mr. Kerrigan is clearly here, so we are ready to rock and roll. So, as the song says, we will start at the very beginning because it's a very good place to start. So, this is the warrant for the special town meeting for the Town of Lancaster. For Monday, November 14th, 2022, the town meeting will be at 7:00 PM at the Mary Rollinson Elementary School just down the road. The first article is for bill, to pay bills of prior fiscal years, sponsored by the Select Board, who took affirmative action, recommend affirmative action, rather, to the town, and the article reads as follows. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,564.82 or any other sum of money from available funds to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2022 (detail is listed in the warrant) or act in any manner relating thereto." Our subject matter expert on Article One, our town administrator, Kate Hodges. Kate?
My name is Kate Hodges. I'm the town administrator. Wanted to say good evening, thanks for coming out, and I, before I began, wanted to say a special thank you to Sterling Lancaster Television, who has been here for many, many hours getting this set up to be broadcast live, which wasn't something that we envisioned when we started, and it's great that they were able to move in such short order and to try to battle the acoustics that are in this great room that can sometimes be arduous for people to hear. Also, thank you to Kathy Rocco, who is the executive assistant in my office, for doing all of the prep work, Scott Muth, who is our facilities manager, for setting up the room, and John D. Tomaso, for helping set up the technology here. So, thank you to all of you. So, the town meeting warrant has 11 articles. The full context of the warrant are available here in printed version. We also have extras that are in the library, they're in the Lancaster Community Center, and they're in the Prescott Building. It's also on the town's website at www.cilancasterma.us. As Chairman Kerrigan has said, Article One is approval of prior year fiscal year bills. The fiscal year runs from July 1st through the 30th of June. Municipal bills may only be paid through a warrant, which is signed by the town administrator as the chief administrative officer, and at least one Select Board member as the chief executive officer. The three bills in question are depicted here. Here, the invoices were received either in late July or in early August, after the final fiscal year '22 pay warrant had been issued. That was issued on or about July 15th of this year. Affirmative action on this article allows the town to pay these from this year's appropriations, and the Select Board and the Finance Committee both recommend affirmative action.
And before we get any questions, if there are any, I just want to ask a question that Select Person Turner asked, which I thought was a good one the other day. On the warrant, you noticed there's a date next to these bills. Those are the dates, if I'm correct, that were on the invoices for the people billing us. Oh, Cheryl's nodding. And not, it would see, it would, you'd wonder why, if we got a bill on January 1st, why we didn't pay it before June 30th. It's because that just happens to be the date that the vendor put on their invoice, and it wasn't necessarily when we received it in the mail.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Let's see how we do. Question one, any questions about question one? It's, we like to warm you up with a softball, that was a pretty easy one, so we're going to roll right into question two. Article Two is a special act to affirm results of the 2022 annual town election. And it reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to petition the General Court for passage of a special law as set forth, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enacting enactment by the General Court. And, provided further, the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition or act in any manner relating thereto." And then it goes on to list what the bill would, what the act would say to the legislature, which is an act validating the results of the annual town election held in Lancaster. "Section one, notwithstanding any general or special law or bylaw to the contrary, all acts and proceedings taken by the Town of Lancaster at the May 9, 2022 annual town election, and all actions taken pursuant thereto are hereby ratified, validated, and confirmed, notwithstanding omissions with respect to the posting of the annual election warrant and related voter information. Section two, this action, or this act shall take effect upon its passage." Now, our subject matter expert on this, on this fun article is the one and only Kate Hodges. Kate, take it away.
Not sure that I am a subject matter expert on an election, but I can tell you that Mass General Law and the town bylaws stipulate that an election must be called pursuant to a warrant, signed by the Select Board again as the chief executive officers, and posted by the constable at least 14 days prior to an election. In this case, the warrant was called and signed at the same time as the annual town meeting warrant, but was not posted by the town clerk until the Friday before the town election, which was five days, not 14. The State Elections Division has therefore advised the town to seek special legislation, the text of which is written in the warrant, to ratify the election. As the date was known widely and to all, in spite of the posting delay, the state's position on the matter is that this is administrative only, it should not delay or impact the work the town has done since the election or before this vote.
Okay. Now, any questions about Article Two? Rob, are you getting up for a question? Okay. And remember, I should point out, Rob knows this, but if you come to ask a question, please state your name and give your address.
Okay. Just welcome.
And, Rob, I'll just remind folks, this is a, an opportunity to ask a question, to clarify an article on the town, it's not to give a speech about anything, it's to ask a clarifying question. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva. First, on behalf of all residents, I wish to thank the town administrator, Select Board, Sterling Lancaster Community TV, all presenters, all residents viewing this in person, live on SLCT or later on Town Streams, and all observers for this long-time discussion. What I wanted to ask is if we could go a little bit out of order, knowing how long Articles Three and Four can take, would you consider moving Articles Five through 11, get them done first, and then go to Three and Four? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. We are going to take them in the order in which they appear in the warrant, but I appreciate the question. Again, these are questions related to the warrant article that we are discussing right now.
11. Thank you for allowing us to come here and hear about this. I just have a quick question. What happens if we say no to this?
If you say no to the ratification? That's, that's an interesting question. So, some would be that they would stay in place, and we would have to call a special election once again to do that, but it wouldn't unseat the folks who are seated.
Much as I tried. For those of you not in on the joke, I was elected on that day, so as much as I tried to get that thrown out. Any other questions about Article Two? All right, we are just humming along. Now, Rob did point out Articles Three and Four are quite long. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read them in their entirety, they are printed in the warrant. Article Three is entitled "North Lancaster Smart Growth Overlay District," and it is to see if the town will vote as follows, to add a new Article 19 to the Town of Lancaster zoning bylaw entitled "North Lancaster Smart Growth Overlay District" as follows. It's the "as follows" that I'm going to ask our subject matter expert, Victoria Petracca, to step forward and explain. Victoria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, town administrator Kate Hodges. This is a great opportunity, and I think it's so fantastic that we could be here to learn in advance about articles before we show up to vote, so thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
The Article Three, so let me just say that I am Victoria Petracca. I live in Lancaster, I'm a fellow resident, and I chair Lancaster's Affordable Housing Trust, which has been around for a couple of years now, and our role is to promote affordable housing production in ways that are beneficial to the town. And we meet regularly, so if you have questions about what we do, you're interested in learning more, just reach out, and we'd love to see you at one of our meetings, happy to talk to any and all residents. So, the idea is, tonight, I'm just going to jump in with an overview in plain English. It's a pretty high-level view, but I'm here if there are questions, or somebody wants to go into more detail about something. All right, so next. Okay, so here we are. Affordable housing requirements in Massachusetts. So, why do we even have Article Three on the warrant? It's because we have very strict affordable housing requirements in our state, some of the most stringent, I would say, in the nation, along with California, and we are behind. We're not making the grade, so we need to get up and over 10% to be compliant. I think some people know that from a lot of the outreach that the Affordable Housing Trust has done, but some people that I'm still meeting in town don't realize that, so it's always worth repeating. We currently have 138 units, we're at 5.4%, but we're rapidly going down to 4.95 when the state adopts the 2020 census data, which they're planning to do in early 2023. So, at 4.95, we have a lot of work to do in our town, and if we add 141 units, we just sort of eke over the 10% with no cushion. If we were to add 197 units, we'd have a cushion at 12%. So, that's, that's a lot, that's additional units, not including the, we have 138 now, but it's 197 additional to get to 12%. So, the next slide, the 40R bylaw was actually, came about in kind of an interesting way, and I just want to give you some context. In early 2021, the Housing Trust was approached by a developer for a very, very large 40B project at the rear of this former New England Specialty Soils site that is across from Kimball's, right on Route 70. And taking a look, we felt that it was not in the best interest of the town, the way that this affordable housing production was being proposed, and there were just a lot of issues surrounding it. We talked with the developer and suggested a 40R instead. The 40R program in Massachusetts was developed in large part in response to the very controversial shortcomings of 40B, and we began a conversation, and working together, we were able to redesign this project into 40R, which we feel that the Housing Trust has a lot more benefits to the town. Next slide. So, a 40R bylaw, which is what is on our warrant, is considered smart growth, and that's a term that the state uses for a whole host of land use planning tools, so it's part of the smart growth collection, and I say that is versus a 40B project. So, you'll note 40R bylaw, which is a planned initiative versus a project, which is something that just appears in the town. What makes it smart growth? Well, it's master planned land use development. It has built-in requirements for pedestrian-friendly environments, attractive curb appeal landscaping, and amenities. These aren't considered to be a plus, they are requirements under 40R. It's town-driven, that's, that, I would say that's pretty much the polar opposite from Chapter 40B. So, we have to apply to DHCD with our, our proposed bylaw. We have to pass a number of hurdles with the state, and we need town meeting approval, which is why we're here tonight, to discuss our warrant article. One of the really important distinctions about 40R, I know a lot of people in town are close to the environmental treasures in town, and 40R upholds local environmental bylaws, unlike 40B, and I think that in and of itself is a huge distinction that's worth underlining, and it allows for local preference in lottery selection. The other big difference is the category of financial perks. So, we have six big ones listed here, and I'm not going to go into detail on them, but this, too, is a huge difference. There's a zoning incentive payment, a density bonus, and several other important financial incentives under 40R. The state listened, they listened to the communities that were concerned about some of the impacts of unsolicited 40B. The Planning Board approved using delta funds to study 40R at this location in 2021. That's really important. The Monticujuset Regional Planning Commission was contracted to assist the town with the 40R bylaw. The state has approved 57 40R districts in Massachusetts to date, including 20 of the 57 that are in the same highly suitable location category. So, this is very much within the realm of 40R. And we were able to transform from this initial 40B project, which has, as you can see, the housing at the rear that we discussed, and an industrial development adjacent to it, we were able to transform this into a planned 40R smart growth overlay district bylaw. So, again, the big distinction being that this is planned, and it's done with the town, and there was a lot of negotiation back and forth, and I can say that this bylaw that we've created allows us to move forward with a project that will bring much-needed rental housing, unlike the other project, which is for sale, and that's an important distinction because all of those units will go onto our inventory. 25% are affordable, 75% are market rate, but we get credit for all of them under the state's rental incentive program. Huge distinction. So, there are 12 parcels in the district, 12 plus a section of McGovern Boulevard. The total land area is just over 38 acres, and roughly half, 18.55 acres, are environmentally constrained land. I can, actually, if we back up for just a second, you can see the district outlined in this slide, it's also on our website, if you want to look at it up close. Those are the 12 parcels, and this is Route 70, it's, it's basically fronting Route 70 with Kimball's across the street. The Dunkin' Donuts is right there, and then the relatively new service station and the little convenience store are right there, just to situate you, and J.B. Hunt is just behind that. So, J.B. Hunt is coming out of the district. This district has a lot of already impervious surface, which is great for the environment. Okay, so, this bylaw did receive preliminary determination of eligibility from the state on June 6th, 2022. That's a really big accomplishment, because there were 13 different sections in the proposed bylaw that went under scrutiny by the state, and all 13 were deemed compliant. I'm just going to touch on, rest assured, I'm not going into 13 sections of this bylaw, but I am going to touch on F, which is dimensional intensity requirements, because I think that one is the one that residents focus the most attention on. So, next slide, and I'll just have a word about that. So, the 40R capacity. I hear a lot of discussion about the number of quote-unquote "by right" units, and I just want to clarify for people here tonight, or anyone watching this video later, or if you're watching on, on the cable, that is a calculation that DHCD requires for all 40R applications. It is quite simply developable land, so you take your parcel, you strip out anything that is environmentally constrained, and you're left with the developable land, times the density, which is 20 units per acre, times a coefficient that we put in place in Lancaster to ensure that our 40R would be mixed-use. We wanted housing mixed with retail, and perhaps small office space, and services and amenities for the residents in the 40R, but also the residents of the town. And so, that, that 90% is the upper end of the coefficient, there has to be at least 51% housing under 40R, and in our mixed-use coefficient, it can go up to 90. So, that's really the maximum, many developers are not going to want to do 90%, but we had to figure out the maximum scenario, and that produces 339. However, what is the purpose of that calculation? The purpose of that calculation is to figure out what tier of payments, remember I said earlier, there was money coming to the town? The zoning incentive payment is based off of a tier system, so that is basically informing DHCD about which tier we go into. This 339 puts us in the $350,000 category. On top of that, there is the density bonus payment of 3,000 per unit, all totaled, we're at, we're at $788,000 right now, which doesn't exist under 40B. This doesn't account for developable land, such as parking, sidewalks, et cetera, so those are not buildable units, and I want to be really clear on the capacity in the bylaw. Any project is going to have driveways, setbacks, parking, sidewalks, it's not viable if it doesn't have that. The developer doesn't want that, so you can strip out additional land. So, by right, I've heard, I want to address by right, what does that mean in the bylaw? It is the land use that is by right, it is not the number of units. So, when we say by right, or as of right, what we're saying is that a developer could come with an application for multifamily at this density, or less, they could, their project could be townhomes, or it could be something else, it doesn't have to be at this density, but we can't deny the project based on that use. That's not how by right works, by right is the use, it's not the number of units, and I see this over and over again, I've seen it a lot on social media, but the developer is entitled to, or they can have this, and the, the term by right is for the use. So, I think I covered everything here. The projects still require local permitting review, they have to go in front of the Conservation Commission if they're impacting jurisdictional resource areas. This is not a free pass, and if they are impacting resource areas, the project may shrink, you know, there may be units that come out. Just a quick point on this iPod, I think this is really interesting. The iPod already allows, as I speak, multifamily housing, so this is not something that doesn't exist. The iPod allows multifamily at 15 units per acre, similar density, however, it has not produced much. We, I think we have one project that was permitted, Harbor Classic Homes, which is a small subdivision with a medical office proposed next to it. It's not, I don't think it's exactly integrated, it's perfectly reasonable to permit it, I'm not saying it's not, but it's, the iPod has not produced multifamily housing. I would so much rather see Lancaster get its multifamily housing under 40R. This is such a better program, and it's frankly, what we deserve in this town, is something that brings us benefit and doesn't just come down and sit down in the town and, and cost us. The 40R residential protections, the district has some great protections written right into the bylaw. We were able to move substantial housing away from White Pond, listening to residents. We've got a natural buffer with McGovern Brook, we've got open space in our, we've met open space, which is something that is encouraged under 40R. We have a separate entrance and exit right on 70. We have buffers with state forest land, et cetera. Next slide. And reaching almost to the end of this, the notion of above and beyond 40R, so I've, I hope I have impressed upon you that 40R is a much better proposal for the town than 40B, but we have gone above and beyond even 40R. Our bylaw includes a lot of other things and best practice, and we have units, I'm just going to focus on one, we are required to have units at 80% of area median income under 40R, but we've gone further. We've gotten units at 60% area median income in our bylaw. That doesn't exist under, under 40B, unless it's asked for, and a developer is willing to do it, but because they're under no requirement, and the town doesn't write the bylaw, it's unlikely that a town would get that with 40B. So, I'm super proud of that particular aspect, it means we're helping more people, and it's a really nice gem in this bylaw. We have trail connectivity, we have large open space buffers between the 40R and Nationwide, and we have a memorandum of agreement that is sitting with Capital Group right now for a, for a project. So, I'll end with a little story. When Mass Housing came out to do the site visit for the 40B, I was there for that, and, you know, they, they saw the New England Specialty Soil site, and they were reviewing this 40B application, and they understood that we have a 40R proposal bylaw that's already approved by their colleagues over in the 40R section, these were people from the 40B section at Mass, at Mass Housing, and they said, "Well, we have an interesting application in front of us, it is compliant, and so we are going to most likely issue a project eligibility letter for this 40B, but frankly, we would really like Lancaster to get 40R." And these were people from the 40B section.
Would you just, I want to stay, make sure we stay focused on what we're asking people to consider at the town meeting?
So, that was just the story that I wanted to share with you, I found that super interesting. And the last slide is just that there is a footnote to this, which is that the 240B units are approved from the state, so.
Thank you.
I'm here if there are questions.
Yes. If you, again, if you have questions related to a lack of understanding of Article Three, please come forward and state your name and address. Again, this is not for speeches or for opining on it, it's just asking clarifying questions about the text and what it means for consideration before the town meeting. Mr. Zidek?
Okay, Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva. Thank you, Ms. Petracca, also thank you and your team for an excellent job at putting all these bylaws together. No matter what happens with this vote, you should feel proud of what you've done over the last year and a half for this, the, the inclusionary zoning, all good work. Okay. On this article, as far as the direct effects of a simple majority yes vote on this, the most immediate result is a presentation to the Attorney General.
Rob, do you, it sounds like you're winding up for a speech, so I just want to make sure there's a question.
Steve, Mr. Chairman, I'd like you to respectfully listen a little bit.
No, I just want to make sure, I, I understand, but.
Okay. So, our assumption is this article, even if approved, can't really be acted upon until approved by the Attorney General, is that correct?
All bylaws passed at town meeting have to be approved by the Attorney General's office. It's not particular to this, it's bylaws in general.
Okay, so there will be a waiting period, hopefully not as long as this past one, but there will be a waiting period. Okay, that's something the voters need to know. If we pass this, we don't immediately add units to our SHI subsidized housing, is that correct?
I couldn't hear you, could you repeat the question?
I think the question was, if we pass this, we don't immediately add units to the SHI, and I just want to, want to be very clear, Rob, the, you're not, it doesn't appear you're asking clarifying questions about what the warrant article asks. The warrant article asks whether or not the town wants to approve the smart growth zoning, not about when, when the SHI. But, she can answer the question, but I'm just, I just want to make sure we stay, the point of this is.
Does this art, does this?
Let her answer the question first.
Okay, go ahead.
So, this is a, a bylaw that creates the district, and then projects have to be submitted, just like any other project, the project would, there would be an application and a permitting review and all of that, and then those units, if approved, go on to our SHI.
Okay. So, assuming we get.
Excuse me, Rob, excuse me, Rob, the town administrator would like to answer one of your previous questions.
Hi there. Could you repeat what you said, just so I can make sure that I'm understanding what your comment was regarding if we're able to enact something after a bylaw passes? Because I, I feel like perhaps you are insinuating that until the Attorney General signs off, that no work can be done and no action can be taken.
No, I'm asking that.
Okay, so, I just want to correct that. So I just want to correct that while it is preferable and it is the standard practice that within 30 days, the town clerk fills out the forms and there's eight separate forms depending on what the change is in the bylaw. They go to the AG's office. If that doesn't happen, the select board has 45 days in order to do that. And if that doesn't happen or there's no action by the AG's office within 90 days, it's seemingly declared as possible, is the first scenario. The second is that there are many communities that have a variety of circumstances that arise and they don't necessarily always get their bylaws in. As a matter of fact, you alluded to some bylaws that you said had not been given in, but they have. They were just after the 30-day period on the town clerk for a number of different circumstances. The AG allows basically the will of town meeting to take place up to and including the time period that the AG's office is reviewing those bylaws. And we don't have to not act on one bylaw because another hasn't been approved by the AG's office. And I received a determination on that today. And the AG's office referred me to Easton Special Town Meeting on November 16th of 2015, which I'm happy to send you so that you have some backup for that. So I just didn't want the comment to be taken that because what happened in town meeting hasn't been rubber stamped by the AG's office that it somehow hinders our progress at this town meeting.
So on November 15th, could one of the landowners start to work on a smart growth overlay district?
If it passes, yes. But it isn't as simple as they're just going to erect something, right? They have to go through all of the proper channels.
But they can start the process.
They can start the planning process and the permitting process while the AG is reviewing the bylaw, yes.
And is there some risk to that? That the AG might come back and say, sorry, you're not approved?
The risk would only be if the AG has determined that the bylaw is not in keeping with the state or federal mandates. In this particular case, we've made sure that they are within the law. And so there's a very low, if no, risk.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions related to the plain English explanation for Article III?
Oh, yes, I sure do. Okay, so what this article does is it adds another option for the landowners. They already have the option to go buy rights, or what is it, easy retail. They already have the integrated planning overlay district option, which you mentioned. They also have the option to do nothing, sell the land. They also have the option to create a 40B. This is adding a fourth or fifth option for the landowners to develop their land. Is that correct?
So 40R is an overlay district. That's correct. There is a memorandum of agreement that is sitting with the developer that the town council has prepared. And that, I think, is the key distinction, that there is a desire on both sides to actually construct this.
Okay, I thought we were here to discuss the article that the memorandums are not part of the discussion tonight.
That's right. But when you bring up the layers, I think that that's the key distinction. The iPod has not produced, for whatever reason.
I would also point, I'm going to give you one more chance to ask a question related to the article. That's like asking a clarifying question.
No, I am asking about the article. The article is adding an option to the landowners for another way to develop.
Right, she's answered that. Rob, while you formulate, can we take another citizen?
Yeah, I'm going to let Kathy go ahead.
Thanks.
Hi, Kathy Hughes, 80, Fire Road 11. I have a question about the application and I'm assuming that's part of the article because if the application hadn't been approved, then there wouldn't be an article. Is that right?
We're, yes, but that's not relevant to the article itself. The application was a while back. That's not relevant to the.
Okay, so we can't ask any questions about the application?
You can ask a question about, the point of this meeting is to clarify for citizens what they're being asked to vote on at the town meeting.
And I guess as a citizen, I would really like to know the answer to this question. I'm very much in favor of this.
You're welcome to pose the question. I'm just telling you, I want to make sure it stays within the confines of what.
I love the idea of this, living in North Lancaster. Gosh, it would be nice to have something there. That'd be great. If it's affordable housing too, fabulous. The question I have though is, did the application have any mention of the 2.5 million square foot development that is going to be adjacent to it and abutting it? So that's a good question, isn't it?
It's not relevant to Article III.
Oh, I think it's incredibly relevant.
I appreciate that you believe that.
Well, as a voter, it's hugely relevant.
Rob, do you have a question?
Okay, it's me again. So part of the road to create, to create this SGOD is to invoke this bylaw, one. But it doesn't mean anything unless one or more of the landowners wish to pursue it. So my question is, I forget how many landowners, current landowners we have there. Have any of them even suggested that they wish to pursue this option? Current landowners. Thank you.
Would you like me to answer that question?
I mean, it's, she can answer, she's welcome to answer it. It's not relevant to the question people are being asked to consider at town meeting. But if you feel comfortable answering it, that's fine.
The largest landowner in the 40R district is interested in building a mixed-use residential commercial project and has expressed that repeatedly. There are some additional landowners as well.
Thank you.
So that would be North Lancaster LLC?
Together with 702 LLC.
But 702 LLC doesn't own any of that land.
Rob, that's not, I really need you to.
We're here to get facts. That's what the voters need. We need facts.
But the opportunity to debate and discuss pros and cons.
This isn't a debate.
Excuse me, Rob. Excuse me, Rob.
Math for facts.
Excuse me, Rob. The opportunity to debate and discuss pros and cons on these articles will be on November 14th. This forum is to plainly explain to the townspeople what these articles are for. The town meeting, which is our legislative body, you are our legislators. You can hash that out for hours that evening. You have had plenty of opportunity at other meetings, including all of ours, to discuss this. This meeting is about clarifying the language, which is very dense for townspeople who haven't had as much time to study and analyze it as you may have. So I just ask that you respect the purpose of this meeting and ask questions related to clarifying any questions and not, as I said at the very beginning, this shouldn't be a surprise that this not be an opportunity to opine or argue for or against a particular project.
Mr. Chairman, when we talked about this at your last select board meeting, this meeting tonight, the motivation was so that voters would get facts, that we would not get opinions. I'm all for no opinions here. That we would get the facts that we need to vote based on these articles. So when we asked for facts related to these articles, I think those are fair questions. These are things that by the time we get to town meeting, it's too late to ask them. So I would like you to consider how badly we need these facts, how badly we need these questions answered.
I appreciate that.
We only have 11 days, so please, give us some leeway.
I appreciate that. Do you have any further questions related to Article III that will be within the confines of what this meeting is intended to address?
I do, but I'm going to think about them for a while.
Okay. Any further questions about Article III?
Yes, hi there. Anne Ogilvie for Turner Lane. Good evening.
Good evening.
Troubled by the attempt to control the speech of people at the meeting tonight. And I just want to say that at the start. It's, there's only 14 people here from the public. It would be nice if they could get their questions answered. It's unfortunate that you're seeking to control the narrative so much. I do have a question. Thanks for the presentation, Victoria. I do appreciate it. I just wanted to ask, I guess my first question is, you mentioned it had eligibility. And I just would like you to describe the eligibility and when we could expect to get the payments for the district.
Sure. So the town of Lancaster received a preliminary eligibility determination from the state. There is a copy of this online. If anyone wants to read the letter, it's on the Affordable Housing Trust website. It has a requirement that the infrastructure be in place. So sidewalks, if we say we're doing, you know, thinking of pedestrians in this 40R district, they're expecting to have sidewalks, that we have water, we have sewer. These are things that, I have to say, the developer wants as well as the town. So I think it's actually great that DHCD withholds the funds until that infrastructure is in. I just want to clarify, it can be prorated too. It doesn't have to be throughout the 40R. It could be if there's a first project on certain parcels, as long as that has its infrastructure in place, then those payments will be released.
So the conditional eligibility that we received means that we can get portions of the money when the aspects that you're talking about, the infrastructure, et cetera, are actually implemented?
That is correct. And I think it's a great system because it ensures that the developer has to provide this and we're getting it. And I have no issue with that. I think it's smart.
Yeah, me too. It's just different from full eligibility, right? Because typically, they would give us the money upfront. So if we did another 40R, we would be eligible for money upfront. It's just that this one had so many questions.
So just on that, if I could answer, this is a part of town that Lancaster has been trying to develop for decades at this point. And it's a priority development area. It doesn't have water and sewer. So the fact that we have a developer who is providing the water and sewer at no cost to the town and allowing this affordable housing to go in is really, I think, quite fantastic.
Right. And if those things go in, then we would receive payments.
And they will because the project can't be viable without it.
Exactly. Exactly. So we have to wait for all of that. My next question, I really appreciate that you addressed the fact that there were 339 future zoned units declared as of right in the DHCD letter. And I understand your assertions about, oh, we have to have sidewalks and parking lots and so it won't be that number. But that's what the, that's what the letter from the state says, that there are 339 future zoned units. So I think as a town, we have to consider that. And my question is about parking. Does the bylaw allow underground parking? So somebody could construct something, which you see very often in other places, even where I work, where you can like go in and park underneath and then the full housing structure is right on top of that?
I think it's, I would put that question in the category of so highly unlikely because of the, where do we see underground parking? We see it in Boston. We see it in places where the rents and the purchase prices are on an order of magnitude that is nothing to do with Lancaster. So I mean, it's kind of like, could we see, you know, something else that's highly, highly unusual? Perhaps, but.
Well, I just wonder if the bylaw permits that. That's my question, is if you can clarify if the bylaw permits underground parking structures?
Yeah, I guess we allow it if somebody wanted to do it.
I mean, it's mentioned, right? It's actually mentioned in the bylaw, I think. Is that correct?
I can look for it if you want. We can talk about it offline.
I thought I read something about it. So I just wanted to clarify that that was possible.
Yep.
Okay. So, let me see. I think the next question that I had was about, I had some confusion about residential projects versus mixed-use development projects. So can, just this district, can someone apply for just a solely residential project?
They can, but it can't be at this density. So what we're saying is that if there is an applicant who wants to build the highest density project, so the 20 units per acre, then we require it to be mixed-use because we feel that at that level of number of units of housing, that it really behooves us to have some services, to have some other things going on besides the housing. But yes, you could do a small townhouse development without the, without the mixed-use requirement. At a much lower, lower density.
What, how, how would that work? So I don't know if you want to choose a parcel and a future zone density and just kind of walk us through what that would look like? If somebody did a residential project that was two or three family, how many units that would mean versus if someone wanted to apply under mixed-use for the same, for the same parcel?
So they don't have to meet the mixed-use requirement if they're doing like two and three family homes, like some duplexes and some triplexes. They would submit their application with the appropriate setbacks and appropriate parking that's required under our bylaws. The project would be reviewed for compliance with that. But on a very small project with duplexes and triplexes, again, there's no, there's no mixed-use requirement for that. It's considered a small residential project.
So on a parcel that had, sorry, I had to print this so small. Let's, I'm just looking for a round number. If one of these has a round, 15. If we had a parcel that has a 15 future zoned unit capacity, you could put in, somebody could put in an application for 15 single-family or 15 duplexes or a mixture of those?
No. So the 15 is that maximum scenario, Anne. So it's like the 20 units per acre. You could not fit 15 single-family homes because their footprint doesn't, it doesn't correspond to the developable land in that parcel.
So you, what if there were 15 apartments?
If they could do at the 20, if they wanted to max it out, they could potentially do 15 apartments at the 20 unit per acre density. I don't know that that's cost-effective and I can't imagine a developer doing it. But I mean, it's, and again, if we go back to the intent of that calculation, I don't want it misconstrued. I don't want it turned into residents need to be aware that there's 339 potential units, because I've just got through saying that that's not, that's not what the calculation is used for. The calculation is used for determining our zoning incentive payment.
I, I understand it's used for calculating the payment, but I believe the state also has an expectation that it, up to that many units could be built.
If you can-
Which actually leads me to my next question. But before we do that, though, but, so someone could build 15, sorry, two-bedroom apartments or three-bedroom apartments on that same 15, on that same parcel? Just, just numbers-wise, assuming everything else met all their requirements? That's what that number means. I'm really trying to understand. I'm not trying to harass you, I'm trying to get an understanding here.
I would just ask you to consider that that number doesn't take into account parking, so it wouldn't get plan approval, because I don't know of any instance where any town has approved residential use without parking setbacks. And in this case, sidewalks are required in the bylaw, infrastructure, and so on and so forth. So it would be kind of difficult.
Right, but my point is, if someone submitted a plan that met all the criteria of the bylaw, that those, that the density numbers per parcel are actually the limit, right? Those are the limit, if all the other requirements of the bylaw are met, and that the state seems to have some pretty strict rules about what the plan approval authority could reject, right? So it'd have to go through our conscom, of course. It would have to go through any other, I guess, go through the, well, it wouldn't go through the planning board, it would go through the plan approval authority. But if it were able to meet all those requirements, we would be, our PAA would be bound to approve it if it met the criteria in the bylaw.
So if it meets the criteria in the bylaw, yes. But again, I don't know if you're tying that to the density.
Well, I guess, I'm just, what I'm saying is, we don't know what kind of projects are going to come forward under this. You're trying to generate, you're trying to generate affordable housing. And so there could be a multitude of projects, different designs, different types of homes, uses. And I'm just trying to get an understanding for myself and for others about how much latitude the PAA has to work with if projects meet the bylaw. And it's my understanding, they don't really have much. Once we adopt this, it has to conform to our local bylaws, which is great. Really, really like that.
Yeah.
But they don't have a lot of latitude to say, actually, no, we've met all of our affordable housing needs, and we don't actually want to approve any more houses. They just, they're going to have to approve what comes in front of them if it meets the bylaw, and that the density numbers do impact that. That's a, that's a ceiling.
Right, I guess I would just reframe this a bit, Ann, with, think about the iPod, for example. Like there was no, when the town passed the iPod, there was no crystal ball where we said, oh, we're just unleashing the possibility of multifamily housing. And, and we, there was no way to know what types of projects would be proposed under the bylaw. But the bylaw gives you the outside parameters, and it gives you what has to be done in terms of the quality of the development. And what I like about 40R is that the bar is very high with the aesthetic, with the landscaping, with the heavy emphasis on sidewalks and all of that. So there's a lot in there that it has to comply with, but there's no way of knowing until you create your local planning laws, your bylaws, of what applications are going to come forward. The Housing Trust has a role. It's to create different typologies of housing. Lancaster is homogeneous in many ways. And what this bylaw does is it allows for other kinds of housing that are more cost-effective. So people who can, you know, dream of coming into this town, or have already, they live here now and they're being priced out, whether it's their housing, their residential taxes, or what have you, these typologies allow them to stay.
Yeah, and I think it's so important to create the affordable housing in town. I really hope we're able to do better at that than we have been able to so far. I, I guess, we're kind of in radical agreement about the fact that we don't know what kind of designs are going to come forward. And, and the iPod is different because it doesn't have a state overseer, right? That says like, you have to do it this way. Whereas the 40R does. There's a state saying, no, no, Plan Approval Authority, you don't get to make that decision because it's in the, this, this project conforms to the bylaw. So that's the difference I see with the iPod. Thank you, I have another question. I'm hoping, you know, you, you did a wonderful presentation tonight and mentioned the MOA and the landowners. And so I'm hoping you could clarify the lots that are involved in the MOA. The last date for the AHT MOA is June 2nd, so it's a little dated. So I'd just love to know which parcels are specifically involved in the MOA?
So, I, I just before, I, I would love, I'm going to ask Victoria to answer the question. The MOAs are not going to be considered at the town meeting. So I just want to, for any, for townspeople, I don't want to get them confused to believe the MOAs are going to be considered at a town meeting and voted on, but Victoria would like to answer that.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that.
We have currently the, an earlier version of the MOA posted on our website, and then there's been some back and forth. I did ask, I know you wrote to me and asked if you could have a copy of the most recent one, and I'm waiting to hear back. I don't know if you got my email today?
I did, and I, and I really appreciate it.
So I think it's going to be posted imminently because we're in the last, we're dotting the last i's and crossing the last t's. So it should be on our website very soon for anyone who's interested in reading the memorandum of agreement for the 40R. But the largest landowner is, so that's North Lancaster LLC, and 702 LLC has the options to purchase those parcels, and they've been verified and they're legally compliant. So they have site control.
Yes, I was hoping you could go through, I, I went through the master MOA, and there are parcels listed in there. And so I just would like confirm the parcel numbers that are included. That would be great.
So it's actually the whole district, Ann, and it's actually, the entirety of the site is discussed in the MOA. So the parcels where there, so the parcels for the quote-unquote "project", I would say, the 40R project, are the parcels that are south of McGovern Boulevard and that encompass JB Hunt in the slide. So it's everything, actually, I can read them off if you want.
Yeah, I just want to know the ones that are called out by name in the MOA.
Sure, yep, happy to do it. It's 14-4H, 14-4I, 14-4A, 14-8.0, 14-8.0A. And I would like to specify that 14-8.0A is largely preserved open space. But those are, there's a small piece of the project that goes on to 14-8A, and the rest of it is protected. And that's another super benefit, I think, from this 40R transformation, is we're getting additional open space, environmentally sensitive land protected. But that's the area of the project. But the MOA, it discusses that, but it also discusses the rest of the 40R. So there are some really clear boundaries on what everyone can expect. So it doesn't, the MOA doesn't just stop there. It actually talks about the rest of that 40R. And it actually mentions the whole rest of the entire former sand and gravel operation.
But I want to be very clear to voters again, that is not being considered at the town meeting. So I don't want to confuse anybody, but what to expect.
Right, we don't even know if it will be signed yet, right? We have to wait till Monday to find that out. Thank you. So it's the five parcels in the front that, that are specifically called out in the master MOA, and, and that this first project will be built upon.
The 146 units mixed with retail are in that section?
Yes.
And then there could be additional retail in the future, or, we, we don't know. I mean, we're, I can't predict exactly, you know, who's going to submit what application down the road.
Of course not. Nope, you couldn't. But I just want to, I just want to clarify from my, my own understanding that there are seven parcels not mentioned in the MOA.
That's not what I said.
Well, again, I don't want to confuse folks by discussing an MOA that is not being considered at the town meeting. If you want to, you've been, we've done a great job thus far of focusing your questions on the Smart Growth Overlay District and the article we're considering. If we can stay on that, then I think we're going to be in great shape.
All right, well, let me think about that, Ben. I will cede the floor here to another interested citizen.
Okay. Any further questions about Article 3?
Jean Rich, 281 Mill Street Extension. I have a question, and I don't know if it's for you, Steve, or for Victoria, but in the article, you have a Plan Approval Authority. And in that authority, you are saying that you're going to pick a member of the Economic Development Committee, but you no longer have an Economic Development Committee that I'm aware of.
One exists that just hasn't been populated.
I'm sorry?
One exists, as it was voted on at the time being, it just hasn't been populated.
Okay, so you'll have members to fill all these?
Yes, thank you. Rob?
Okay.
And I just want to be very clear, and I apologize if my tone has been taken differently, Ann, I'm trying to moderate, not control language, so I, but I appreciate being checked every now and again, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, Rob Zidek, 103 Caliva. I'd like to ask Mr. Carrigan a question first. Now, when you said that the voters would not be considering the MOA at the town meeting, you mean, we're not voting on it, we're not voting yes or no on the MOA?
Well, I mean-
But voters will be heavily considering that MOA in their decision. So I just want to get a clarification on what you said about the MOA and how it's going to be considered at, at the town meeting.
Sure, I mean, I, voters could consider what I had for dinner that night and how they determine their vote. They could determine, they could consider anything they'd like in casting their vote. That's their right as a citizen. I'm saying that is not going to be considered, it is not in the articles, it is not being put before the voters for consideration that night. They could consider, they don't like the look on my face and how they vote. I'm sure many people don't like, don't like the look on my face. But, yes, no, the clarification's right. It's not going to be put before the voters.
That's good, because the last thing I think we want to be is voting on, on an MOA. Ms. Patrac, I want to ask you something. You mentioned that 702 has a purchase option on the land that North Lancaster LLC has. And I have before me Book 59673, page 70, and it does describe a notice of option and right of first refusal between North Lancaster and 702 LLCs. And it does list the parcels that are involved, plus it's throwing in some other thing with wide open, we don't have to pay attention to. But what we really need to pay attention to is this had to be done honorable before November 8th, 2020. Now, as we all know, based on the land transfer agreement and other things, we have to pay attention to expiration dates, or we can get into some real trouble. So do you have, and this came right out of the registry, do you have something else that either extends this agreement or supersedes this agreement? Because we've never seen it, and we'd like it posted if you have one.
Okay, so my under-
I'll let you answer. I will just point out that you snuck that one in, Rob, because that's not directly related to Article 3. It's related to things related to Article, but it's not related to actions on that line. So, but she's going to answer it, but.
The purchase options have been extended.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you post that, please? Because it's not showing up in the registry.
So I think that the developer would have to agree to that. I can't post other parties' extension agreements without their permission, so.
I see. Okay, but, okay, okay. My next question is with regards to your presentation. And you mentioned that one of the motivations behind this development is to get to safe harbor. And I'd just like to hear from you that we have a housing production plan, so we have actual, several ways we can get to safe harbor. In fact, we may even get to safe harbor before any development starts on this land. We prefer this one, but there are other paths. So, so this, this was an option. And I ask you to recall when a resident, that would be me, asked the Affordable Housing Trust a ways back, if we were already in safe harbor, would we continue to pursue this? The answer was yes, because it's, it's a good thing to do. And so my question to you is, if we get to safe harbor, okay, before anything happens on this, on this land, can we tell the developer, never mind, we don't want your SGOD because we already have the numbers we want, and we already have the numbers we want with respect to school populations? Can we, can we do that legally?
So I would like to refer back to the mission of the Affordable Housing Trust. Our job is not solely to bring Lancaster into safe harbor. Our job is to bring the very best affordable housing to the town. So if this project was deemed by the Affordable Housing Trust to be among the very best that we can do, and it meets best practice, and it's a great thing for Lancaster, I personally would probably not push back. I think that we need to think about ways to get up and over our 10%, not at 10.00001, but to have some cushion. And we are so far behind right now that honestly, we need more than just this project. We need more than this plus Jones Crossing. We need more than just a couple of projects.
I agree. I mean, I personally would like to see 12.5%, but I'm probably in a minority. Okay, but I just wanted to be clear, because some of the literature is coming out as almost looking like this is the only way we're going to get to safe harbor is with this project, and, and all we need is this project alone. And I'd like to just hear clarification, I mean, we have-
I don't believe Article 3 claims that. So we have to stick to questions related to Article 3. And hypotheticals should not be, is not going to help citizens clarify, so go ahead.
Okay, I, I think that answers these for now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hughes?
Hi, Kathy Hughes, 85, Road 11. Just a quick question, I just want to clarify. If we vote yes on this, does that mean that the current businesses there change?
No.
No.
No, it doesn't. It's an overlay district.
Overlay, so the trucking, JB Hunt trucking is still there?
So let me clarify. The, the article is for an overlay district, so it goes on top of existing zoning. So we have enterprise zoning, and this is like an overlay on top of it. JB Hunt can still stay there, except that, I mean theoretically, yes, except that they're a tenant. They're a tenant of a landowner who would like to construct a 40R project. So they control JB Hunt.
I understand how landowning works. I just wanted to clarify that if this district was put there, we could in essence have housing and another truck area there, just because that's what would be allowed, is that right?
I think it's important to understand that once retail and housing go in, the value per square foot of that land is going to increase. And I would find it difficult to believe that somebody would do-
I think that's a speculation, though, isn't it?
I think the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Question, I don't even know if they can answer. Jean Rich, 281 Mill Street Extension. If the 40R gets approved and Article 4 doesn't, what happens? Is it, are they totally separate, or do they have to kind of go hand in hand?
So the 40R is a separate article. People can vote however they feel like they want to vote on, on 40R, independent of the rezone of the other article. However, Capital Group is going to proceed with the 40B as their backup plan. They've, I mean, they've, I don't think they could make that any more clear. And they have their approval in hand, which the effort that goes into a 40B application is quite lengthy and expensive. So the 40R district would be created, but they would not move forward with an application within it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Rob Zidek, 103 Caliva. So I'm glad you answered it that way. So this, we can put our blinders on to the, to the rest of the site. The, this article is for, you know, is independent of the other one as far as its applicability. I mean, we don't know, maybe one of the current landowners says, you know, this is a good idea. I think I'll go for it. And we've accommodated that with this article. So that was a good answer. Now, one of the other effects of adding a, an affordable housing complex as what happened down on Sterling Road is we are presuming that this community would, by definition, become an environmental justice community. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Again, stick to Article 3 specifically and not hypotheticals about the future.
I, I will stick to the Article 3. Now, when, when the presentation was made, there was some discussion about the bylaw, but what was really produced was the good things that can happen because of this bylaw. So I believe I should also be able to ask questions about the good things that can happen because of this bylaw. Otherwise, it's not very fair to have the presenter present the good effects of a by, of a bylaw, and the residents can't, cannot add to it.
Time for debate at the town meeting.
It's not a debate, this is a-
I'm letting you ask as many questions as you can, I just want to try to stay focused.
So you, so you did answer it, so you, you do not believe, I mean, I'm sorry. The, okay. So here's another one. Okay, my last question, I think. The current landowners, and of course, the abutting landowners, while we're in this period between voting approval and something getting done, they still have the option to build per other zoning, their underlying zoning, their, the iPod, even a 40B if they so desire. They can, they can all do that. So they could put something by rights right into or right next to that SGOD. That would be a terrible thing to have right next to the neighborhood. And I guess, and, and we can't stop them and say, hey, wait a minute, we've got this approved bylaw here, so somebody might put an affordable housing project. That's probably not going to hold any water, do you agree?
So, the, the, this is addressed in the memorandum of agreement, and I'm not going to, I don't want to go off track, but I don't agree.
Yeah.
So, but, but, but there's nothing in this bylaw that, that stops the current landowners from, from doing something per their other zoning and development options?
A landowner can always use underlying zoning if he or she so wishes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. All right, Article 3, to bed. Thank you all for a very lively conversation. Article 4, the enterprise rezone, I'm sure this will go by quick. The enterprise rezone, which is to see- The enterprise rezone, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map of the Town of Lancaster 220 Attachment 2 by rezoning a portion of the parcel identified as Assessor's Map 8, Lot 45 of Lancaster, located within the residential district to the enterprise district, such that the entirety of said parcel is located within the enterprise district and as further shown on a plan entitled, quote, "Proposed Rezoning Plan Lancaster MA", end quote, dated August 31, 2022, and on file with the town clerk or act in any manner relating thereto. We have asked the town administrator to be our subject matter expert on this. So take it away, Kate.
Good evening. Article IV, Enterprise Rezone. The proposed change relates to two parcels of land visible on the town assessor's maps as Map 8, Lot 45, and Map 9, Lot 4. In terms of the site, this real-life photo illustrates an aerial view taken from the back of the site looking easterly towards Route 70. The area consists of 368 acres of land bordered by woods, wetlands, and White Pond Road neighborhood in Lemonster to the northwest, Route 290 to the west, existing commercial area that includes Dunkin' Donuts and the mobile gas station and convenience store to the east, and the northern part of the Nashua River to the south. The green parcels indicated in this map denote those areas within the property that are currently within the residential zoning district. The yellow shaded areas depict the existing enterprise zoning district, or EZ for short. The western portion of the green area is currently owned by 702 LLC. The impetus behind the proposed zoning change is to move the limit of the enterprise district westerly in order to envelop the entirety of 702's land. This would make the entire parcel zoned as enterprise. The area in question has long been identified as one of Lancaster's top priority development areas. For any site to be designated as a priority development area, the residents must vote to accept and designate the areas as such by a vote at town meeting. Specifically, MGL Chapter 43D, Section 3A, states, quote, "For a property to receive a designation as a priority development site, the governing body after approval at town meeting shall file a formal proposal with the state seeking approval." The residents of Lancaster voted to approve this very area as one of four sites in North Lancaster designated as priority development sites. This was achieved through a majority vote of Article 10 at special town meeting held October 6, 2008. The certified affirmative votes, supporting materials that were forwarded to the state for approval, and were approved by the state in March of 2009. The reason for this background is simply to illustrate that the designation of this area as a development area was not a notion which was imposed or thrust upon the town, but rather one that came from the town after a lengthy process, which included the Monticlet Regional Area Planning Commission, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and many town boards and committees. The zoning change request resides within the area to the right of the star highlighted in purple. The image is taken directly from the 2009 MRPC map prepared for Lancaster. The two purple areas at the time the map was drawn were referred to as Aesthetic Park. The study mentioned, Aesthetic Park, sorry. The study mentioned that certain developments in North Lancaster, including new zoning areas that allowed for mixed-use development and portions of the town, which together would constitute an integrated planning overlay district, or iPod. MRPA's study noted that for Lancaster, this would be best accomplished through the exploration and the development of the areas highlighted here. DHCD has also found the site to be, quote, "At a highly suitable location where mixed-use development would promote smart growth for Lancaster." The site, as highlighted in yellow, resides in both districts, zoning and enterprise. The current zoning line delineating the two districts is seen here in red and runs north to south. In taking the illustrative plans for the area provided by Capital Group within the required concept plan, we were able to superimpose it over our existing zoning map in order to get a clearer picture of what we specifically are looking to accomplish. Here, you can see the portions of one building labeled here as A1 and 2, and two other standalone buildings are proposed in the areas outside of the current enterprise. The pink line seen running east to west in the map illustrated in the location of the ACEC, or the area of critical environmental concern. If the zoning change is affirmed, the developer will have to work through the site with state and local environmental protection and conservation agencies to ensure compliance. Lancaster's zoning bylaws, as some may know, require that any petitioner applying for a zoning map change prior to the public hearing relative to the matter submit a concept plan to the planning board. These images, including the one seen here, are taken from Capital Group's COP/SET plan, which were most recently provided on 9/20 and 9/27 of this year and are located on the website. In terms of the particular area in question, the consolidated layout plan proposes approximately 1.165 gross square feet of mixed use, including but not limited to office use industrial, warehouse, commercial, laboratory, and biomanufacturing spaces. These buildings would cover the rezoned portion of the 702 land, here seen as A2 and Building B and C. The 702 land, both within the enterprise and residential zoned land, has been the home to a sand and gravel removal operation for two decades. This is an actual aerial photo taken in the spring of this year showing what the site in question currently looks like. The blue line in the photo depicts the approximate site boundary, which illustrates that minimal disruption would be outside of the sand and gravel area as previously disturbed. The red line in the back of the photo shows the line between the two zones currently. And this, while on a different scale, is simply showing and attempting to illustrate the areas in question relative to the existing conditions versus the conceptual plan. If one were to explore the pre-existing conditions within the current residential zone, you would find that much of the area has already been disturbed and is home to several smaller excavations, material stockpiles, and access roadways. The end.
Questions relative to Article IV? Mr. Zidek?
I'm Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva. So this zoning article, I believe, is the same as the zoning article that was ready to go to the last town meeting. And if it's not the same, can you describe what has changed between the annual town meeting and now?
I'm going to yield to Mr. Allison on this one.
I don't know all of the changes, but the last article that was put forth was a citizen's petition. This is a article that is sponsored--
That was in 2021. I'm talking about the one in this year, in May of 2022. That was not a citizen's petition. That was a select board, that was a select board-sponsored article.
So, okay, so let me finish my statement. So the last, so town meeting 2020? Is that not the one you're asking about?
No, the town meeting 2022. 2022, that we did not, we did not actually have this at the meeting, but we were ready to have it, but the select board pulled it off the warrant. So what changed between that select board-sponsored article that we ended up not voting on and this one that you're asking us to vote on?
Can you hold on just one second? Oh, it was referred back to the planning board.
It was referred back to the planning board.
That was the 2021 one. I'm very familiar with that.
Okay.
What about the one that was supposed to go to May of 2022, but was pulled before we could vote on it?
The one substantive change that I can tell you, if I can, sorry, go back here, is this particular parcel was initially included in that and is now not included.
I see. So that remains residential?
Will remain residential, and it's part of the proposed land conveyance to the town.
Okay. So that is the difference.
That's one of the differences. I wasn't here for the steps leading up to that, but I believe that there were a number of concerns that folks had, particularly at the select board level, of wanting to make sure that we had a public hearing on the subject and some other matters. And people felt like it needed more time to bake. Before that, my understanding is that it was a citizen's petition that was then referred back to the planning board.
That is correct. That in June of 2021, it came as a citizen's petition, which was the same with the boot included there. And yes, we came to vote on that, and we were not allowed because enough people voted to send it back to the planning board. So, and that went a full year. Okay, but you answered my question. Between the article, the map, if you will, that was ready for town meeting, had had a planning board hearing on it in January, I believe, had a negative determination on it. It was pulled--
We're not here to discuss things that were approved--
And now, so the only difference is that that boot has, is no longer in the picture. It stays residential.
As she stated, yes. That's not the only, that's one. It's one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was the only difference. I said that was a substantive difference.
Well, are there other ones?
Well, first of all, it's not super relevant with an issue that didn't come before the town in May to ask her to parse the differences between two articles, one that was not considered by the town at a town meeting and one that is being considered by the town. So we want to not confuse townspeople by actually focusing on Article IV that is going to be before them on the 14th, and not on one that was not before them in a previous town meeting that we're talking about.
Okay. I'll yield to Ms. Cavioli.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Cavioli, 117 Fire Road 11. This question is about oversight of developments going forward, trusting, voting an article in. I have history in the area. The gravel pit was voted by the town to be allowed as a tree farm, which would have been really nice, and has been a gravel pit and now is being toded as something that needs to be fixed. So I'm just concerned of the town not having power to control projects to keep them good for our community. Is there, who would have oversight once something is going--
Is your question under Article IV?
Yeah, who would have oversight about Article IV going forward?
I want to refer you to the planning board chair, Mr. Frank Streeter.
The planning board. In addition, the Conservation Commission. And if there are issues with the Board of Health, the Board of Health would also be involved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any further questions? Ann?
Thank you. Ann Ogilvy for Turner Lane. I just have, I want to ask a clarifying question, because I was comprised-- Hope you feel better, Steve. Tough times. What is that funny, on my map, it's a green with white polka dot parcel. What is that parcel number? And can you confirm, did you say that is to be conveyed as open space and will be conveyed to the town? Or did I misunderstand?
You did not misunderstand. I can pull the parcel number. Jasmine, do you have a way of pulling that up? So if we could stand by on the parcel number for my phone-a-friend. But yes, that is part, I know that we're not discussing that today, but it is one of the conveyances to the town in the EZ MOA, providing the select board votes to endorse that, which I know we're not discussing.
I will also, I will also not discuss the fact that none of the parcels are currently listed in the MOA as it is online. So for citizens, it is impossible to know which parcels are involved. And as you know, there's a great deal of interest in the land conveyance from the broken 2017 land agreement. So I look forward to hearing that parcel number. Thank you.
But we will get you that parcel number.
Vegas rules here, I guess.
Thank you.
So another follow-up question, and I'm hoping maybe the planning board can clarify this. Maybe you plan to do it that night anyway. Be great to know the uses allowed in the enterprise district so that the residents, especially the residents in the neighborhood that so closely abut this area that you are proposing to rezone, can understand those more fully. They're not in the bylaw here as it stands. And so just would like to understand what those uses are.
Hi, Ann. Excellent question, and I don't have them memorized. What I will tell you is that they were written about 30 years ago now, and they are overdue for updating, which is on the planning board's agenda. I also note that in discussions I've had in the past with Capital Group, they are very willing to restrict themselves from some of the objectionable uses, like rock crushing and the like. So, but all that is in the zoning code, but it's complicated enough. I definitely do not have it memorized.
Yeah, well, it's complicated to, as a resident, just to read the use table. So it would be really helpful if the planning board can kind of clarify some of that or plan to do that at town meeting. It's, let me see. It's, is there, is there a better map than this that really actually has some legends and things? The map, you know, that actual map that it's included in here? Will that be clarified for town meeting, just so it sort of places this in context with the rest of the land? Or will this actually be the accompanying document? It's kind of hard, it just exists in space, really. It's not connected to the other parcels. Okay, and will there be an official map at town meeting?
Well, the map that's in the warrant is the map that's in the warrant that you see before you, and then there'll be a presentation, excuse me, that'll take you through in more detail.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ann. Appreciate it. Rob? Hit it.
Sorry, we have the number?
Ann?
Maybe, I don't know if everybody wants to know, but it is Assessor's Map 8, Lot 45. And it's attached to Map 9, Lot 4, and Map 13, Lots 5 and 10. How about I just have Vanna go back with the sheet so you can write it?
The Assessor's Map 8, Lot 45 is in the warrant article, but-- Well, she can write that down, certainly. Okay. Hey, folks, folks, just for our viewing audience at home, you're standing right-- Yeah. So, thank you so much. Jason doesn't like anyone to take his camera time, so we have to make sure. Rob?
Okay. Yeah, Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva.
Keep going.
There's some side discussions going on. I'd just like clarification that this, despite a lot of what we've seen, voting yes on this article does not guarantee, I mean, does not stop the landowners from putting up a 40B if they choose to. And voting no on this article does not guarantee that they will put up a 40B.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. And one last thing, and to my friends on the planning board, I ask this. What would really help us out voting for this article is if we had some minutes, some planning board minutes, especially around the public hearing, because we do not have access--
I appreciate that.
--to the public hearing minutes.
I appreciate that. I'm sure if you take it up directly with them outside the context of this meeting, they'll get you what you need.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Kathy Hughes, 80 Fire Road 11. I was just curious. I understood that part of this rezone includes an ACEC. And I'm just wondering, I can't see that identified on this map. And I'm curious where it is and what is going to be in that ACEC area from the concept plan? Because where is the water treatment plant or the water--
So again, we'll endeavor to find the difference for you. I just want to be, just to follow the--
That's not part of this?
It's technically, it's not. We'll see what we can give you as much of it, because that's more considered in the MOA and not part of this. This is merely, the question before the voters is whether or not to do the rezone of that parcel of land.
Right, and once again, I think it's really-- And once again, I think it's really critical to making that decision.
We'll get you, we'll get you the information.
Because that kind of information, you know, as somebody who lives in an AC/EC area, and I have to abide by all of those rules and make sure that it's all environmentally friendly, I would expect that any builder would also, or developer will have to also abide by all those rules. And I'm a little concerned when I hear that, you know, they're putting certain things in an AC/EC area. I'd like to know what they're going to be. That's why it is that area, so.
Sure. No, no, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
This line is indicative of the AC/EC line.
And so, most of it, is that right? Most of the development is there?
There's a large, yeah, the entirety of, in this plan, in B and C and a portion of A1.
So, it really cuts right through that massive building. Okay. Good to know, so.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, then, the Planning Board will have, if we vote yes to this, the Planning Board will be taking that all into consideration when these plans go before them. Is that correct?
And Conservation.
And the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Okay. And so, we don't want?
And the Mass, Massachusetts State Departments too.
Okay. So, we don't want any MOAs speeding, you know, speeding this through because that would be a problem for the area.
It wouldn't even be a, if we were talking about it.
If we were, if there was going to be an MOA approved, then we would know about that in advance. That would be really helpful to our discussion in how to vote on this.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Young Jones, 94 Barnes Court. My question is, what happens if this doesn't pass?
In keeping with the spirit of this evening, the zoning change just doesn't happen. There's a lot of opining on what that means impactful to the town, but I want to stay within the rules I've established, which just merely means the zoning change doesn't take place.
Okay. I was wondering if it will come up again?
If this zoning change will come up again?
Yes. Can the zoning change come up again if it does not pass this time?
Yeah, I believe there's a two-year. If it fails at this special timing, there's a two-year.
Okay.
I think you should ask Chairman Streeter, but my belief is because the Planning Board reported favorably on this article, that it can come back again. But you should ask Chairman Streeter that.
The question, why don't we ask them?
The question was, if this does not pass, can it come back?
In two years.
In two years?
It can come back in two years, or the Planning Board can reintroduce it sooner, but no one else than the Planning Board can do that.
Nobody else but the Planning Board can do that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva Road.
Thank you, Rob Zidek, 103 Kaliva Road. You ought to come by one day, Steve. Show you the neighborhood.
I want to know everybody's, it's going to be so easy to do a Christmas card list this year.
Sorry. I'm not going to say one.
I threw him on that one.
I want to thank Mr. Streeter for that clarification on the two-year rule.
Sure.
So, it's, we don't have to worry about the, I mean, they don't have to worry about the two-year rule if the Planning Board introduces the next one.
Yes.
Okay. Good, good. Thank you. That's good to know. So, let me ask you, the concept plan was required to be submitted, but we're not actually voting on the contents of the concept plan with this vote.
Right. We're just voting on the zoning change.
Okay. And one of the things we can do as citizens at a town meeting, and this applies probably more to Article Three than Four, is we can, on the floor, propose amendments to the articles. Is that correct?
Yes.
We had that. But we cannot propose amendments to the concept plan. That would not make sense because they're not part of the article.
That won't be, that won't be part of the town meeting.
Okay. I guess I could ask the moderator at town meeting, but can one of you go over the process if a citizen, if, let's say, Article Three came up and a citizen says, I'd like to change apple to orange in paragraph three?
Sure. I don't, I don't remember an apple.
Ms. Hodges is standing up right there.
I actually am the subject matter expert for that legitimately.
Hold on a second. Yes, we're glad to address that question. We don't want to presuppose a ruling of the moderator, however, that he is separately elected. It is his meeting to run, so she will give you information that she knows to be the case and what is generally accepted principles in law, but we don't want to presuppose how the moderator may or may not handle the meeting. Got it?
So, once the motion, the initial motion, is made in seccative during the discussion, a motion can be made for an amendment. The amendment has to be read, and it has to be typed, and what will have to happen is that it has to be displayed because we won't have the ability unless you know the motion beforehand, and the proponents of the motion wish to make copies. But if you don't know the motion beforehand and you're literally making it on town meeting floor, you would come to me or somebody else that has the computer that has a display like this. We would put it up, the words of the motion, and then that alone would be voted on yea or nay. If it's nay, then that motion fails and it goes back to the original one. But there has to be a way that, number one, it's in keeping, it can't fundamentally change, so you can't do apple to an orange. It has to be basically a clarifying or a pre-qualifier that's in, inside of the motion, in the spirit of the motion, and so that's where the moderator would come in. So, you couldn't say, we're only going to sell apples, and then you change, well, actually, we're going to sell oranges because the two are different. But you could say, we're only going to sell Granny Smith apples, for example.
That's a very good example.
So, if, if in fact, Mr. Zidek, you have an idea of what the amendment would be, my recommendation would be that you get in touch with me or Kathy from my office and that we send that to the moderator ahead of time. Doesn't change your ability to make the motion on the floor, but it certainly will shorten the amount of time that has to be debated on the floor between you and the moderator while everybody sits. And of course, you'd need to have a second.
Okay, I need a second, but that's it. We don't need 10 other people to stand up and agree, not for that one. Now, if, if it's like Article Four, which requires a two-thirds majority, would any amendments proposed also need a two-thirds majority?
Yes. Because it's a zoning article.
Okay.
So, regardless of the qualifiers that are put in or taken out, yes.
But the rest of them would be simple majority because the articles, like Article Three would be a simple majority.
Yeah, I mean, so when we get into those, I would want to check with council, who will obviously be there too, because I just don't know what, what the proposed language is, but if we're speaking very generally, that's a general.
And we can also propose, like what was proposed on June 21st, 2021, to send something back to the Planning Board or something like that. We can also make proposals like that, or can only the, I'll say, sponsor.
So, now, so now that's getting into, I don't know how far the chair wants to indulge.
Or I can ask the moderator.
But now we're getting into the citizenry being able to basically dictate policy to the board. So, the recommendation can be made. So, you can't, the town meeting cannot will a policymaking board to determine the date of when they're going to do their business or what they're going to discuss. My understanding, just from being in the field for a while, is the spirit of town meeting would be, we want this to happen, and the Select Board would generally say, we want to uphold the spirit of town meeting, and we would strongly encourage. But a recommendation for a Planning Board or any regulatory board to take up a matter at a certain amount of time is a policy decision and one that really doesn't have any legal teeth, as it were, for the legislative body to dictate that. So, it would be a strong recommendation.
Right. I don't believe it, just to correct my wrong. I think Rob's mention of a date was referring back to a previous meeting where someone did send it back to the Planning Board.
Yeah, we voted on it.
I don't think he was suggesting, suggesting a time. No, no, I know. Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
I think so. I can, I think I'll hold those for the moderator if I wish to do something. I believe, in fact, can I recommend that everybody going or considering going read the Citizens Guide to a Town Meeting?
You sure can recommend that. Absolutely.
Thank you. And in fact, if there was a nice link to that.
I consider that relevant for all 11 articles.
If there was a nice link to that somewhere on our website.
It's on the website.
Okay, good. Thank you.
There you go. Democracy at its best.
Ann Ogilvy for Turner Lane. Kate, I want to thank you. I think that was really helpful information, and I guess if I can beg a little bit of indulgence, I'd like to, since we're here to talk about the town meeting warrant and the town meeting, would just like, and I don't know if I can stay through all the Scrivener's errors, although I'm sure there'll be robust question asked about those, especially chickens. Maybe there's some chicken questions.
Yeah, we're just trying to get through that one quick.
So, my question to you, or maybe it's a plea, is I understand we can't use the clickers for various reasons. I understand from your last meeting, people have asked for a ballot vote, perhaps. I understand from listening to Kate's question and Mr. Zidek, we might have multiple votes on the floor that might request, require ballots. And so, I guess my plea for the Select Board, Town Administration, is to be prepared with paper ballots adequate for those number of revisions that could happen on the floor so that our town meeting, while likely to still be contentious and full of good arguments, at least has the papers available to get through the night.
And I appreciate that, and we have every intention of being as prepared as humanly possible for all trimmers.
Thank you. And will the town clerk be there to assert the process?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we've, we've met already once. We're meeting again. We are going through this ad nauseam to make sure that everyone is represented and their voices are all heard. But thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Now, let's get to some Scrivener's errors, right? How fun. I'm going to go to Article, I'm going to go to Article Five. I'm going to go to Article Five.
No.
Yes, I am. I'm going to Article Five.
I, I am just not.
Okay, great. Scrivener's Errors, Section 220-8.1, to see if the town will vote to amend the Use Regulation Schedule of the Zoning Bylaw 220, Attachment One, at Section 220-8.1 GG, in quotations, accessory uses by one, adding after the asterisk the phrase, quote, "may be permitted by special permit for lots within area less than .9 acres, provided all other conditions of this section are met," end quote, and two, striking the letter Y, as in the one just before Z, under the Residential Zoning District column and inserting in place thereof the letter P, as in Paul, to be consistent with the abbreviation for a use permitted as a matter of right in the district, subject to all applicable dimensional and special regulations, so that the section reads as follows. That is printed, and this is a, they're going to explain what this is. It's a correction of, like basically a typographical correction, so I'm not going to read what is in the warrant, but I will yield to Kate to explain Article Five.
Yep. Mr. Chair, if it please the room, we're taking five and six together, and my apologies, it's misnumbered up here. So, I'm glad that we did this so we can figure out the errors here. So, Scrivener's errors are simply just a nod to an error, typo, missing page, in this case, a zoning change, and it is not a zoning designation change. So, in the cases of Articles Five and Six, we're correcting two typographical errors. Section 220-8.1, the asterisk was cut off and denotes the need for a special permit, and we're also changing the Y that was in the table to an SP, special permit, as Y is not a designation that we have in our zoning codes. And 8.4A and B, we're correcting spacing issue, which basically separated a section of the bylaw inappropriately and made it unnecessarily confusing. All parties have requested affirmative action.
All right. Any questions on Five or Six? Well, you don't have to. You're welcome to stay all night. No, don't.
The warrant's already printed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. I just think I know what each column stands for, residential, neighborhood, business, light industrial, one, light two. People aren't going to know what all these columns are, so Frank might be up there each time explaining what each row means.
Well, as the sponsor of the articles, then he should be up there explaining.
Actually, I'm going to say, it's printed in the warrant.
Exactly.
And then I'm going to apologize after the previous two zoning articles for bringing up chickens. But that's just life. And realistically, for the record, Russ Williston deserves credit for all of this. Russ was the guy that found these various things and worked hard in bringing this up, and he deserves credit.
Yeah, I just think people aren't going to know what they stand for. That's all.
So, Kate, the only one question really, to Jean's point, can we have just like a little explanation handout that says, that has a corrected, if not part of the warrant, but just so people understand it and Frank doesn't have to go through it, that has the different designations? So, it wouldn't change the warrant, but it would help.
I'm confused as to the question.
So, Jean's concern, and I think it's, is a good concern, is that people aren't going to understand the table because it's missing the headings. So, if we just have a little, when you're signing in, just the headings here.
Yes. They want a heading across the top.
So, perhaps what would be helpful is to have this slide be this with the heading?
Yeah, true. Just like a little explanation thing, something like that, just to help pass it quicker.
I don't, I'm sorry, you're both, so, to have this with the heading on it?
Yes.
Same as here with the heading on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Understood. Thank you for the suggestion. Wait, you can't leave. What are you doing?
Yes, she can. Okay. Article number, any other questions about Articles Five and Six? Saying none. Article Seven. The, it's Mr. Streeter. The zoning, solar, photovoltaic, and standalone energy storage systems sponsored by the Planning Board. The article states to see if, the article's very long, so I'm going to leave you the first sentence, to see if the town will vote to amend Article Seventeen of the zoning bylaw for the purpose of allowing standalone energy storage systems and clarifying references to the electrical code as follows.
So, I'm not going to read the entire article.
And we thank you for that.
So, this does two things. The first is there are a few minor cleanups on the town's existing solar articles. The major part of this is an energy storage system bylaw, which is a fancy way of saying a big battery bylaw. Large energy storage systems are being used increasingly for grid stabilization and also as a way of working with a variety of solar arrays. This is actually a fairly cutting-edge bylaw at this point. If I'm giving credit to others, Tom Christopher gets a great deal of the credit for moving this along and seeing the need for this. This is something that we will probably be revisiting in future years, but it is prudent of the town to adopt this bylaw at this time, even if we end up revisiting it going forward as the technology changes.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. Are there any questions for Chairman Streeter? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That was good. Okay, Article Eight. Amend budget for fiscal year 2023 to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article One of the May 2nd, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, appropriating funds to defray the expenses of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and, as necessary, therefore raise and appropriate transfer from available funds from the operating budget by borrowing, by transfer from overlay surplus, by transfer from fund balance reserve for school debt, or any combination thereof, for the purpose of supplementing departmental expenses and/or to reduce certain departmental expenses or otherwise amend said vote or take any action, or, sorry, said vote or act in any manner relating thereto. Kate Hodges, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Special credit for this goes to Cheryl Garaby, our Finance Director. Thank you so much for catching all this and keeping us in line. So, this article seeks to amend the FY '23 budget by $231,160. The utility costs for the town's oil, fuel, water, and sewer have gone up substantially. This is not a matter unique to Lancaster, but is seen throughout the Commonwealth and beyond. Because we have to guess between 12 to 18 months in advance of when the fiscal year begins about what costs will be, unforeseen circumstances like our current gasoline and electric cost spikes would really not have been realized that long ago, and thus, we look to adjust. Salt for our roads is also up quite a bit from that of previous years. Salt for our roads is also up quite a bit from that of previous years. In fiscal year 22, DPW sanded for 530 hours and plowed for 90 and a half hours. Also, in fiscal year 22, we received salt from two bidders at an average cost per ton of about $63. We spent about $102,500 for the year for about 1,600 tons. This year, DPW Superintendent is expecting to use about 1750 tons, and prices have increased from the $63 a ton level to between $72 to $85 a ton. Legal expenses have also seen a steady increase from years past. However, it's worth noting that Lancaster has historically underfunded its legal budget and supplemented due to an omnibus budget with other line items. Notwithstanding that, I have taken the time to go through our legal bills since beginning in May, trying to understand the liabilities. The billing is going to change, so it's far more detailed, but as of right now, we have to go through by hand. So I've only been able to comb through about three months so far, just because of other pressing matters. But I note that in May, June, and July, the town spent approximately $5,580 on issues related to North Lancaster, about $8,500 on citizen, either related or citizen-led legal matters, including contesting records requests, open meeting law violations, or alleged ethical violations. We spent about $7,000 on human resources or personnel-related matters, and we spent about $10,100 on either existing and/or pending litigation or threats of litigation. And so I see that those are subjective. They do not necessarily come back time after time, but certainly that is the atmosphere that we are in now, and we don't see that changing anytime in the next eight to 10 months.
Thank you. And that affirmative action is recommended by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And Mr. Allison would like to say something. Yes?
Can you repeat the number for customer-led, what did you call it?
Citizen, just citizen.
Customers.
Yes, citizen-related legal matters, including contesting records requests, open meeting law violation claims, and ethics violations was $8,530 for the months of May, June, and July.
$8,500, and that's for simple things like public records requests and the citizen's ability to file, like, what are some other examples of those expenses?
Sure, so somebody requests public records, and they are contesting what we have released as records, either saying that, you know, they, they know that a record exists that we didn't disclose, or we told them that we didn't disclose for a certain reason that they're not satisfied with. They can then contest that to the Secretary of State's office. That's when usually legal counsel gets involved. Open meeting law violations are exactly what they are. You know, people are saying that things were happening either before a meeting started or outside of a legally called meeting that need to be defended by counsel and, and folks need to be interviewed by counsel and a response needs to be generated.
And I think I also heard that, so total litigation, so not including that, was like 10-5?
$10,100.
So we spent $10,100 in actual litigation and $8,500 on things like public records requests, et cetera?
Correct.
Let me, let me ask another, well, it's, it's, this is one of those questions that I already know the answer to. It is possible for towns, that is a significant cost for public records requests in and of itself. It is possible, I know this having worked at a state agency who dealt with issues like this, all the Attorney General's Office, it is possible for the community to charge citizens if they want to for the copying costs and for, and for staff time as well.
Yeah, so in towns that are larger than ours, we usually have to give the first couple of hours free because we are a community under 10,000. We do not have to do that. And so we are able to charge, we have to charge the hourly salary of the lowest-paid staff member that can do the job, or $25. And so for the most part, we would be at the $25 range. We have not done that except for in one instance. But we are sure to be talking about this, I'm sure, at a future Select Board meeting.
I was going to say, this is not related to an article.
No, but it's something, it's something that I think we need to have some guidance on staff-wise because certainly it wouldn't defray all of the costs, but at least a third of it.
It is likely an item that I would suspect will come to a Select Board meeting near you in our not-too-distant future.
Yeah, I have a, I have a clarifying comment, which is a thank you for your attention to detail and actually getting the specifics of that information. No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions on Article Eight? Okay, hearing none. We are on to Nine. Very exciting stuff. All right, the next, the next two articles are related to the Board of Public Works. Article Nine is to amend FY 2023 capital expenditures, "To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the following sums of money to be expended by the respective departments or officers indicated for the capital projects and purchases, items and descri, itemized and described, or act in any manner relating thereto." One, there are two things listed in this article, I believe, yes. One is $50,000 for a 10-wheeled dump truck, and one is $10,000 for a loader bucket. My understanding is we are no longer considering the $10,000 loader bucket because that was purchased by somebody else while we were waiting to consider it at a town meeting. So we will make that correction on the floor and tell people we are only considering the $50,000 for the 10-wheeled dump truck with plow.
Correct. So essentially, this slide will look fairly similar, but it will have the strike-throughs. Because it's printed in the warrant, I want to make sure that it's consistent with the warrant.
Thank you.
But it does not actually change the motion, which essentially says to raise and appropriate Chapter 90 funds. So Chapter 90 funds derive from the state and are provided to cities and towns within the Commonwealth to help defray the costs of maintaining roads, bridges, and other public works-related infrastructure. For fiscal year 23, Lancaster is set to receive $323,474 in Chapter 90 funds. And at this time, DPW Superintendent is looking to appropriate the money of $50,000 in order to be authorized to spend it on an equipment purchase. The equipment purchase seen here for the 10,000, as I said, will be removed and, has been asked to be removed, rather, by the Superintendent as it's no longer available. Therefore, the article seeks only to raise and appropriate the $50,000 to purchase heavy equipment. And DPW Superintendent Kevin Bartlett is here, if anyone has questions.
If anyone has any questions. You're off the hook, Kevin. No questions. All right. Okay, Article 10 is to amend the Water Enterprise Fund. I should say, you're off the hook on that one, I suppose. We're still doing a DPW one here.
True.
So you're half off the hook. "To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Three of the May 2nd, 2022 annual town meeting, to appropriate $1,030,000 and zero cents from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, or act in any manner relating thereto. The operating expenses for the Water Enterprise are entirely funded by water revenue." And there's a table that is right there.
So again, this is to combat the increases in utilities. So it seeks to amend the Water Enterprise budget by both amending the revenue projections, because you have to raise and appropriate. Raise means you charge more fees. Appropriate means you are authorized to spend them. So we are raising an additional $20,000 in fees and planning to expend that. And again, both are for increases and, that we are seeing in electricity and gasoline. And I am told that affirmative action has been not only requested by the Finance Committee and the Select Board, but also the DPW Board. And again, the Superintendent is here, if anyone has questions.
Now you're off the hook. There you go. Okay. Thank you very much. And the last article of the night, now, we've done this in two hours and eight minutes. I'm sure the town meeting will go just as smoothly and quick. Article 11. "Reaffirm the vote of Annual Town Meeting 18. Article Nine, Removal of Police Chief Position from the Massachusetts Civil Service." And the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to reaffirm the vote taken at the 2018 annual town meeting under Article Nine, to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to petition the General Court for passage of a special law as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition, or take any actions with respect thereto. An Act Exempting the Position of Police Chief in the Town of Lancaster from the Provisions of Civil Service Law. Section One. Notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary, the position of police chief in the Town of Lancaster shall be exempt from the provisions of Chapter 31 of the general laws. Section Two. The provisions of Section One shall not impair the civil service status of any incumbent holding the office of police chief in the Town of Lancaster on the effective date of this act. Section Three. This act shall take effect upon its passage." Ms. Hodges.
So this is a reaffirmation of a vote taken at the 2018 annual town meeting under Article Nine. There have also been many subsequent votes since that and a few prior to remove the entire department from civil service. At this time, with the police reform bill pending, the state has decided that they are waiting to remove any municipalities from civil service until the commission that is appointed to review the civil service regulations and laws has been able to review and update their laws and regulations according to the, the new Reform Act. And so this is an opportunity for us to remove at least the chief's position, which will allow the chief to have a better opportunity for hiring, promotion, and increased ability for leadership and enacting change in the, in the chief's position and then setting term limits. It also allows us to promote a permanent police chief rather than just having an interim. The Select Board is recommending affirmative action.
Indeed, we are. Any questions on this matter?
I have a very clear question. Why have you reaffirmed this at this point? I don't know if you're going to report it.
Because I believe it timed out.
That's correct. It's gone into its third reading and died on the floor.
So it needs to be reintroduced.
As did,
A good question.
As did the bill that we voted twice for the entire department to be out of civil service. So we just keep repeating ourselves until the legislature listens or give up, which the latter will not happen.
We are, I want to say, we are grateful to our state representative, Meg Kilcoyne, and our state Senator John Cronin, who have both acted with great, with all due haste to help us in drafting this and facilitating, hopefully, its eventual passage in Boston at the great, in General Court. Any other questions related to Article 11? Okay, so we did it. It wasn't that fun. Before we adjourn for the evening, I want to thank all the participants, both the presenters, the town boards and commission members who are here, most importantly, the citizens, for showing up and asking questions about the town meeting and our warrant. I want to thank Sterling and Lancaster TV and that crew for being here and helping us get this message out, and thank the voters and townspeople at home for hopefully their participation in the town meeting. Decisions are made by people who show up. And so I would encourage you, if you care for this town, as we all do, and you care for the items that we've just delineated for you here tonight and are in the warrant, show up on November 14th, 7:00 p.m. at the Mary Rollinson Elementary School for our special town meeting. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.